Ladies and gentlemen, may I have your attention please? Before we begin this meeting, we ask that everybody silence their cell phones. The Fort Bend ISD Board of Trustees meeting is an open meeting to the public to observe the board conducting district business. Therefore, audience members may address the board during the designated Audience Items section on the agenda. If you have any printed materials you want to give to the board, you must provide to them to the board's secretary Jane Kaiser or to me, and we'll provide them to the board. We also ask the members of the audience to be respectful of others and remain quiet during the meeting so that everyone is able to hear the proceedings. For your convenience, microphones have been provided on both sides of the boardroom. Please speak directly into the microphone if you're asked to answer a question or address the board during the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Officer Antoveros. The time is 6:03 PM. This meeting is hereby called to order. We have the presence of a quorum, and the meeting has been duly called and notice of the meeting has been posted for the time and manner required by law. Please stand for the pledges of allegiance and remain standing for a silent invocation.
(Inaudible) United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Please remain standing for a silent invocation. Start with recognitions this evening. Dr. Dupree.
Yes, ma'am. We are proud to honor a few of our outstanding students and staff members, so if you would join me in front of the dais, we'll get that taken care of first.
Madam President, Dr. Dupree, members of the board, we have some outstanding young ladies here this evening. They helped us with the pledge of allegiance, and I'd like to ask them to please stand. From Armstrong Elementary, we have Ms. Chelsea Benson. She's one of the AM Podcast students who delivers the daily news every morning. We also have Naomi Ogu, who's in the Gifted and Talented Program. Naomi also delivers the daily news. Also joining them, Neeli Banijawa, who participates in the Vista Talent Pool Program there as And these young ladies were selected for their outstanding leadership abilities. Let's give them all another round of applause. And if you're here from Armstrong Elementary and you support these students, can you please stand for a round of applause? Thank you to our families for coming out this evening. Moving on, from Sartarsha Middle School, we have an outstanding student. We have Nora Rami, who placed first in the Texas History Day Contest. Her individual documentary qualified her for the National History Day Contest in Washington, DC in June, where she represented the entire state of Texas at the National Endowment for the Humanities Day on the Hill. And if you're here from Sartarsha to represent your school and supporting her, please stand for a round of applause. Thank you, ladies, for joining us. Dr. Dupree, that's all the recognition for this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Sofer. Next up would be Audience Items, but we don't have any speakers this evening, so we'll move into information, beginning with the Emergency Declaration Purchase Update. Dr. Dupree.
Yes, Madam President. On August the 26th, as we were in the midst of Hurricane Harvey, the board had an emergency meeting to delegate authority to the superintendent to procure necessary materials and services to take care of emergency issues related to the storm. As part of that action, the board also asked that we come back at the next regularly scheduled meeting to provide an update on what we have done in response to that since that time. So Oscar and his team are prepared to provide a brief update to you this evening.
Thank you, Madam President, Dr. Dupree, members of the board. Based on this resolution to date, we have engaged 22 vendors to help us, contractors and vendors, to help us get the district back up and going for the first day of school last week, which we, it really, we really do appreciate the fact that we were able to do this because it was really the only way that we would have, you know, made it happen. And there was a lot of work that went on, but the main thing was the vehicle to get the work done. And even though all of our campuses were affected in one way or another, there were actually eight campuses that took the bulk of the work. And those campuses were Burton Elementary School, Gordon Goodman Elementary School, Wansagene Elementary School, Scanlon Oaks Elementary School, Clements High School, Hightower High School, Ridge Point High School, and Mercer Stadium. All of those are the ones that are the, gonna, when I come back and give you actual cause, those are gonna be the ones that really took the bulk of the work. Because, you know, when Dr. Dupree and I spoke during the storm, you know, one of the things that I told him was that I knew based on the amount of rain that we had had, I knew there was water in buildings. I just didn't know if it was a bucket or if it was a swimming pool. But we knew water was gonna be in the building. And so these, these are the ones that had, you know, the bulk of the problems. As we know also, Wansagene is one that we are going to have to do extensive work to. The remediation work is about three-quarters of the way through, and then, once that occurs, then we'll go ahead and, on advice from legal, determine the next steps forward. At this point, we have engaged a contractor, a job-order contractor, but there's a possibility that, you know, we may have to, you know, put that out to bid. So until we know for sure, you know, I'm not certain what that cost is gonna be. So we're also working on contracts, and we'll be getting those finalized. And once we have all those numbers, then we'll be coming back to you at a future meeting to go ahead and get this, all these expenditures approved.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. Do we have questions or comments from the board members? Mr. Rice.
Yes, Mr. Perez, will we pursue reimbursement from FEMA for any of this work?
Yes, sir. We're in the process of doing that. We have a team that was put together through our DMO, and we're funneling all of our information through them so that we can go ahead and perfect our claim.
Do you have an idea about how much money we've had to spend to get the schools ready?
Right now, our rough total, and this includes the putback of Wansagene, is about 12.4 million.
All right. Thank you very much, and thank you for working so hard to get the schools open in time for the start of the postponed school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Mr. Burdine.
Thank you very much for that report, Mr. Perez. I think that's really eye-opening to see the scale of what we were dealing with as a district, and thank you for your hard work and leadership. What does "putback" mean?
Well, the remediation is taking all of the damaged materials out and then making sure that the building is safe to go ahead and occupy. Once that occurs, then we'll be rebuilding, basically putting all the walls back, all the floors, ceilings, procuring all the furniture that was damaged, and getting the building back up to a state that we can go ahead and educate in.
Okay. And were we able to recover any insurance money from this? This might be Mr. Bassett's question, but...
So the bulk of the damage at Wansagene was actually caused by flooding, and we do not have flood insurance for all of our properties, including that property. So the bulk of the claim will be for FEMA assistance? Okay? The two properties that we do have flood insurance on actually did not flood. So, anyway, we'll be looking at that as we, as we review all of our policies.
So going forward, we're gonna explore flood for the whole district, or...
I mean, we're certainly gonna need to. We're gonna, we're gonna explore that, and we'll be, we'll be talking about that in the future.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Burdine. Mr. Rosenthal.
Well, those were kind of my questions, too, so, yeah, I think a lot of us have thought about, rethought the purchase of flood insurance over the last few weeks. Yeah, so I think we should probably visit that as a district, so that's unfortunate.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Mr. George.
Yeah, just curiosity question. All these damages are from the flooding, or...
As far as, as far as Wansagene is concerned, the bulk of it was from the flooding water coming into the building at a higher level. I don't think that there was any, you know, major roof leaks that contributed to that, but we're still, we're still looking at things.
But if it is happening from a disaster of this kind, if it is not flooding water, we do carry property and casualty insurance?
Yes, our wind and rain definitely is covered.
So that is going to be covered in some of these damages, some of the...
Not, not so much on Wansagene. I mean, we'd have to determine, you know, how the water came in. If the water came in from flooding only, then, then we won't have the coverage.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. George. Thank you for the update, and we look forward to hearing more in the future.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, it's our Student Assessment Update. Dr. Dupree.
Yes, ma'am. For some time, we've, our staff has been working on the assessment framework, including the philosophy for assessment in Fort Bend. And so I've asked Deanna Sayavedra, our Chief Academic Officer, to lead tonight's discussion on, an update on our work thus far, and she'll be engaging other members of her team.
All right. So, good evening, Madam President, members of the board, and Dr. Dupree. This evening, we're pleased to share the work that we've done to develop our district assessment plan. Our presentation this evening will include the work of the Assessment Task Force, the assessment audit findings and recommendations, the assessment philosophy, and Phase One of the assessment framework, and finally, next steps and priorities for the 2017-18 school year. At this time, I'm gonna hand it over to Ms. Stephanie Williams, our Executive Director of Teaching and Learning, and she's gonna lead us through most of the content for this presentation.
Good evening, Dr. Dupree, Madam President, members of the school board. Thank you for the opportunity to present our work related to assessment. As you know, in 2016-17, the district strategic plan goal shown here prioritized work around assessment. During the school year, we in the Teaching and Learning Division sought to align the assessment work with the curriculum development. We felt that that was important because through that alignment, we could place a focus on student-centered assessment. To provide a little bit of background around that work, I will use our district goals from this year, starting with District Goal One. District Goal One ties significantly to the curriculum development, and as you're well aware, we engaged in a student-centered curriculum design over the past year. That process resulted in the identification of standardized curriculum components, which are present in all of our core curriculum now. The key components within that are guidance supporting Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three instruction, and then really delineating for teachers what intervention and enrichment should look like for students, so that we provide all students access to our curriculum. The next goal relates directly to assessment in that we know we want to ensure that students are owners of their learning, responsible for their own learning, and their knowledge of how they're progressing through the curriculum. This goal is achievable through the supports in the curriculum development process, including first, learning progressions. A learning progression ties to standards that we have prioritized in our curriculum, and it outlines what students need to know and be able to do related to that standard, both within that unit and going on throughout their educational career in that content area. Second, curriculum writers developed learning intentions and success criteria, which provide both teachers and students a common language for measuring understanding, which is part of the formative assessment process. Finally, specific tools were created in the curriculum, rubrics and checklist. I believe your most recent board update gave you an example from Grade Two Math, which showed a learning progression, the intentions, success criteria, and that student checklist that could be used for students to become owners of their own learning. We believe those components will lay foundation for the shift that we want to make from teachers being the giver of instruction to a partnership between students and teachers where students truly own their learning and can mark their progress through the curriculum. Finally, Goal Three relates to instruction in that we want to focus on professional learning communities to ensure that instructional decisions are data-driven and that teacher/lesson development can be tied specifically to needs identified from formative assessment data. So to begin our work, we felt it necessary to engage with an Assessment Task Force. We knew that that task force needed to be made up of a cross-functional team of stakeholders, from the central office to principals, teacher leaders, and even teachers across our campuses. When we first formed that task force, we realized that we had some learning, I'm seeing some of our members here tonight, we realized that we had some learning to do around assessment. And so we engaged with John Tanner of TestSense, who has provided significant direction in the world of assessment as an expert on how we can frame a philosophy and framework. So he helped our team with developing foundational knowledge around assessment, and then over the last six months, what you see here are the key actions that the task force has taken. We developed an assessment philosophy after the review of an assessment audit, and that audit helped us to guide and develop a Phase One assessment framework, and then next steps that we would focus on over the next couple of years in order to build out that framework for our teachers and students. The audit was, which was performed by Mr. Tanner, included interviews, surveys, and an analysis of assessment practices, which included campus visits at nine of our schools. The district staff selected the nine schools to be representative of the demographics within our school district. At those nine schools, Mr. Tanner utilized information that he gained to provide eight findings and 10 recommendations within the audit. Once we saw the eight findings and 10 recommendations, the task force knew that in year one, we could not tackle all of those. And so using a subgroup of the task force, we prioritized both findings and recommendations for our work during 2017-18. Once we had those findings and recommendations, we also had principals look at those and provide feedback prior to making our final decision. This slide represents the three findings that are prioritized for work in 17-18. The first finding relates to instructional time. What the audit showed us is that more than half, and I'll say that again, more than half of our instructional time for state-tested subjects is spent either prepping for a state assessment or with actions related to state assessment data. And we know if we want our students to show true progress, that we have to shift that time to quality Tier One instruction, and that when we do that, we're going to make space for other learning, be it intervention or enrichments that our students need. The second finding is related to the assessment framework. Quite frankly, they showed us that the framework that we're currently using in the district does not support the needs of all students, meaning that it does not provide adequate instruction for our teachers to guide daily decisions to meet the needs of every student. So in order to really think about how to redesign that framework, the task force prioritized a focus on formative assessment, so that there's a give-and-take among teachers in time for our students' needs. Finally, regarding the use of data, the finding was that we have a misunderstanding related to the use of state assessment data. State assessment data is there to identify trends and patterns related to student learning, not to diagnose strengths and weaknesses. In order to address the use of data, we will establish data protocols that link directly to the purpose of assessment, so that teachers have a guide for making the instructional decisions that they know are so important for their students. Moving to the recommendations, there were 10 in the audit. We prioritized five for work in year one. Recommendation One relates to recovering test prep, and what the audit refers to is test-impacted instructional hours. The way that we will do that is by implementing the new curriculum with fidelity, by walking alongside teachers to help them with implementing that curriculum and focusing on Tier One instruction. Recommendation Two deals with training. In all of our professional learning, we are tying in the tie between curriculum and assessment, so that we understand the purpose of an assessment and how it should guide our instructional practice through the use of those data protocols. Recommendation Three is significant to the goals that we've set forth around student ownership of learning. There are tools within the curriculum, the rubrics and the checklist that I've previously mentioned, that will support our development of students, so that they identify what it is that they know and how they're progressing in the curriculum. And the venue for doing that is through work with teachers and a job-invented model in professional learning communities. Recommendation Four tells us that we need to redesign our current checkpoint system, and so we've been doing a lot of work in curriculum and instruction to lay out that redesign. We'll shift from a model that focuses on multiple-choice questions to a more constructed response, so that students receive feedback on their thinking, not just on their answer. And finally, Recommendation Five, we were encouraged to consider the timing issues in early-grade assessments. Those early-grade assessments impact our students in two ways. One, because of when they started in the school year, our elementary teachers significantly reported that they didn't have the time to set up their classroom routines or to build relationships with students that are inherent to the instructional process. So by implementing the Ren360 Universal Screener, we were able to shift that window back about three and a half weeks to provide that time for teachers. The other thing with this screener is that it, it takes less time to administer to students, so we're saving instructional time in that way. Now I'll transition to the assessment philosophy. The Assessment Task Force took significant time using the learning that we did around assessment to develop this philosophy. We knew that it needed to align with curriculum work and the curriculum development process. Knowing that the curriculum development process is seeking to foster student ownership, we knew that a formative process needed to be in place. And what we've learned is that a student-centered curriculum really allows us to shift the ownership of learning from the teacher to the student. There are tools that teachers have needed in order to do that, and the tools are evident in the current curriculum. Once students begin interacting with those checklists, the rubrics, and the learning progressions, they'll be able to answer three key questions that lead to student ownership. That first question is, where am I related to the learning progression? So today, where do I stand? The second question is, where am I going? We want our students to reach proficiency or mastery, and so where am I going related to the learning progression? And the third one is, how am I going? What is a step I can take in order to move towards mastery and understanding of that When you have a philosophy, the purpose of the philosophy is to guide all decisions around assessment. We knew it was, it was important to define an assessment framework. An assessment framework does two things for leaders and teachers. It tells us the type of assessment that we're gonna give and the purpose of that assessment. And so in Phase One of the framework, we identified these three types of assessments, and I'll share with you their purpose as I go through them. The first type is a diagnostic assessment. It was important in Fort Bend to identify a universal screener that could give us baseline diagnostic data on our students at the beginning, the middle, and the end of the year related to their knowledge of math or reading skills. From the diagnostic, we moved to classroom-based formative assessment. These are decisions that teachers make every day around what to pre-assess, how to formatively assess what students are learning, and then we've added the rubrics and checklist to support student ownership. These tools allow teachers and students to provide targeted feedback on learning. So no longer is it just teacher-to-student feedback, we can also incorporate student-to-student feedback around progress and learning with the use of these tools. Finally, the district formative assessment is important because we know that PLC research tells us that there are about 10 to 12 things in any given content area that are the most important priorities. You know, we talk about what is the most important thing that our students leave with and know. With our district-level learning assessments, we've analyzed data across grade levels, and we've prioritized priority standard, a learning progression that students must know that transcends just that grade level. It supports them on into the, the other content area courses and across courses. By prioritizing that, that priority standard, we'll be able to measure at the beginning of the year and at the end of the year how students are doing, so we can see growth over time. And so after having laid out the philosophy and the framework, there are some priorities where we're focusing our time this year. First, with respect to data protocols, we need to align the way we use data so that it impacts the instructional decisions in the classroom. The universal screener provides us a diagnostic assessment in grades K through 10, so the implementation of that screener is imperative. The learning assessments, the shift in that model will help teachers to tie district-level data to data that they're getting in their classrooms, so they have a stronger, a tighter tie to what's going on. And finally, a focus on classroom-based formative assessment will help to develop students as owners of their own learning through the curriculum tools and also in supporting teachers through PLCs. We do have some next steps. We know that this is a Phase One implementation, and so with respect to response to intervention, the universal screener will be the first step in streamlining that process for students and teachers. The learning assessment, the shift in the model, will help us truly use data to impact instruction. And the classroom-based formative assessment is our single biggest next step with respect to supporting teachers. We need to be able to walk alongside teachers as they're implementing the curriculum, as they're having conversations in professional learning communities, so that those tools become viable for students. And then finally, we know that we need to shift into Phase Two. So part of Phase Two will be monitoring and evaluating the things that we've put in place for this year, but also, we know that we need to take a look at our grading policy. If truly we're, we are shifting to a focus on formative assessment, we need to look again at how we're assessing grades. The Phase One assessment framework, including the next steps, really lay a foundation for us to shift instructional and assessment practices to support student ownership of learning, which will result in positive student outcomes. And now we can take questions.
So first, I just want to say to Dr. Sayavedra and Ms. Williams and the entire team, as a parent, thank you. Thank you for this, because there's things I hear in this that we do for my daughter with Down Syndrome that are individualized for her, and my hope is that we are going to be able to individualize for more students, because that's what really needs to happen. We want to make sure kids are really learning. So I hear some of that in this, and, and thank you for your work on it. Questions and comments from the trustees? Mr. Rice?
Thank you, Ms. Williams, for that very nice report. Did I hear you say that half the instructional time is spent by the teachers prepping for the STAR exam?
The way that the audit defines that, Mr. Rice, is that it's either prepping for the STAR exam or an instruction impacted by data from the STAR exam. So two pieces, not just test prep, but also only having that data to guide instructional decisions.
Okay. And now what we're, and, and did I also hear you say that the STAR exam identifies trends, and it's not a diagnostic tool?
Absolutely.
To understand student needs?
Yes, sir.
So this new assessment model is designed to help the teachers diagnose a student's learning, and did I also hear you say it's gonna move back? It might, it might have been diagnosing, so the elementary school teachers have more time to get to know their students. to get to know their students better and understand their learning abilities better to help them better teach them in the classroom? Did I hear that correctly?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then what is the, what kind of intervals of feedback will the teachers get throughout the year? How often will this information be forthcoming?
So the universal screener is given at the beginning, the middle, and the end of the year, and that works with skills related to reading and math. And so that could be two or three grade levels behind, that's around skills. The learning assessments, they will give two times a year related to the identified progression. But the good news is the tools in the curriculum are evident in every unit and tied to the learning progression in that unit. So within every unit, the tools are there for teachers to diagnose and make decisions and for students.
Okay. Thank you very much. And I would just like to say, Dr. Dupree, that perhaps we can use this information the next time Robert Sanborn decides to pay us a visit. Thank you.
Yes, sir, that's our plan.
Amen, Mr. Rice. Mr. Rosenthal?
Yes, ma'am, thank you very much for that. So a couple of things I'd like to clarify. I know last year we began really kind of doing district-wide checkpoints, right? And from what I remember, one of our recent conversations is kind of seemed like we were maybe getting away from that. But what I heard you say was that rather than more of a multiple-choice-type checkpoint, we're moving more toward, you know, I'm trying to remember the word, the term you used.
Constructed response.
Yeah, right. And that sounds good. My only issue with that is that going to make things more difficult for the teacher because now there's a whole lot more. Instead of just scanning things, now they got to sit there and take home this much paper every weekend and, you know, go through all those answers. So I have a little bit of concern about that. Would you like to comment on that?
Sure. So that was definitely something that we kept in mind. A traditional checkpoint might have between eight and 17 questions. The constructed response that I reviewed today for elementary science has one question that is constructed. Students and teachers would have an exemplar response. And so this would be part of the instructional process. And yes, it would require some grading on the teacher's end, but not significant.
Okay, so do you think that, so would this be based on like an entire unit? This, these checkpoints? Or with a series of units compiled together? Because it seemed like it would require really more than one question to make sure that they're understanding, at least if you're trying to test the topics or, you know, some of the teaks.
So when working with our assessment team, one of the things that they reference frequently is our profile of a graduate and the desire to develop critical thinking skills in students. So when we looked at the data, particularly in science at the elementary level, we identified collecting, organizing, and analyzing data, and that transcends science. And so no matter the content, this same rubric could be used with students as they construct responses. And the power in constructing a response is we remove the argument of did the student really understand or did they guess? Because we can look at their work and know if they know. And so it is a shift, but we believe it's a shift in the right direction as far as giving students an opportunity to display their thinking.
And I do think that that seems to always be an issue with that particular thought process because I saw it in eighth grade last year. You know, all the STAR questions that we would, you know, kind of give, you know, old STAR tests and whatnot, that was always kind of a weakness. So I guess that would answer Mr. Rice's question is that's kind of a trend. Those are the trends that you're looking for, not a specific, you know, what is photosynthesis or something like that, or, right? Is that what you're talking about? Okay. I learned something, huh? So the other thing is, I would agree that there's a lot of prepping for state assessments. And then, let's see, you answered that one about the trends. So as far, I'm glad to see that we're putting rubrics as part of this toolkit. So is the district actually developing the rubrics so that the teachers aren't having to do all these things themselves that are tied, and these rubrics are tied to the curriculum?
Yes. And with respect to the learning experiences, next week, department heads will have an opportunity to give feedback on the rubric. So they will actually see this before their students are ever assessed on it. It'll be in the curriculum so that they can use it prior to the learning assessment at the district level and throughout the curriculum.
Which is the way it should be.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. So that's great because I know I spent a lot of time, you know, in my whole year experience putting together rubrics because I realized that rubrics are your friend. And one, it helps guide, you need to know what to teach them because this is what you're going to ask them to, you know, give back. And also, it eliminates a lot of subjectiveness, you know, once you have these rubrics. So that's good that the teacher, that the district is going to have, you know, help these teachers, you know, with, I guess, I don't want to use the word canned, but I mean, they kind of are. You know, there are rubrics that are already usable so that it's less work on the teachers. So I'm very happy to hear that. So I'd like to hear more how that works out.
Okay, thank you.
And I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Mrs. James?
Thank you very much, Ms. Williams. That was a great presentation. I appreciated all your effort and thoughtfulness and taking us kind of step by step through what your task force had done and then sort of giving us a vision of where you're going. And what I heard aligns with a lot of things the board has been saying. So I really appreciate that. And kind of like my colleagues, 50% of our classroom time on standard, you know, state test-related instruction is not what we want to hear. We've said so many times about how we need to teach the teaks, and the rest will fall into place. And we just need the tools in place to make that happen. So surely the assessment piece is a big part of it, and I appreciate you guys putting that all together. I want to just follow up on a couple of things that Dave asked about. So that the learning, what we're calling learning assessments are taking the place of what we had done before the district checkpoints. And those are going to be not sent to a database in the sky, but instead evaluated by classroom teachers so they can, through rubrics, rubrics that are standardized district-wide. Is that accurate?
That is correct. We do also want to gather the data. We're working on what that would look like so that we could see over time in the district how many more students move to proficiency across the year.
Right, okay. And did I also understand that you were, and the term has escaped me, but the priority standards, I guess, those learning assessments are going to be based on those priority standards that we've identified to be key components through the curriculum?
Yes. And really on one learning progression for the year, what we want to do is we want to identify a learning progression, like the one that, the example that I shared that has leverage over time, and we want to break that trend. We want to have a positive trend for our students related to that progression.
Okay, so that's the one you're referring to? And then the math curriculum that was kind of written out for us? Is that the one you're referring to?
That is an example that I provided you in the board update, the example I gave Mr. Rosenthal related to science curriculum.
Right, okay. Collecting data and organizing data, okay. And then these checkpoints and the checklists, I think was what the term you used, and rubrics and the different tools for doing the assessment, this is going to be done subject by subject. And so kids are going to be experiencing these, not necessarily all in the same day, but as the semester goes on, a couple of times a year to see how they're progressing. Is that kind of, what is the, what's the structure, I guess?
Every unit has rubrics and checklist associated with it. We believe those are the tools by which we promote student ownership. So when we thought about the learning assessment model, we felt if we tied that model to the tools in the curriculum, then they would be more feasible for teachers to use. So the ones for the learning assessment are also in the curriculum.
Okay, so are the, are these, then, when we talk about learning assessments, are these extra additional, special events? Or are they part of the units, as you said, and part of the regular progression through the curriculum?
That's a good question. So they're not additional events. They're part of the curriculum. The particular collect and analyze data occurs in every unit, should occur in every unit in science instruction. So we're picking two times in the year to measure where students are on that progression. A teacher would likely use that rubric in every single unit of instruction. So they would have more data than what we might collect at the district. So when you ask if it's an additional event, we are giving a window for the times of the year that we're measuring, but it should be a natural part of that unit of instruction.
Okay, so we're going to avoid the problem we've had before with, oh, it's time for the biology checkpoint and we haven't, the particular instructor, teacher hasn't been following along there. So the students are like, we just took a random test on biology stuff we've never heard of before. So that whole thing is being eliminated because we're, we're having a progression through the curriculum that everyone is to be following.
That is our goal in scheduling.
That is the theory, okay, okay. And I guess my last, my last question has to do with the philosophy itself. So I, you sent this out to us a few weeks ago, and I've sort of been considering it. And I appreciate, I really appreciate the team's thoughtful effort and kind of getting it all together. I guess my question is, in that philosophy, we've got the term about fluid feedback and reflective practice to determine where students are and where they're going, which makes sense to me. But the phrase about the educators doesn't necessarily make sense to me. So I'd like some understanding as to why we would include that. So I heard you have, saying a lot, no, you cannot. I heard you saying a lot about how this was going to be student-centered. And I recognize the need for educators to have feedback so they can, so that informs their instruction. But I'm trying to understand why that would be part of the philosophy because it seems to me the educators are not necessarily being assessed. So that's where I'm, that's where I'm, that's where I'm stuck.
Okay. To answer your question, I'm going to read the philosophy with the student piece outside of it, and then I'll give you an example. So FBISD believes in empowering and growing all learners by utilizing fluid feedback and reflective practice to determine where educators are and where they are going in the teaching and learning process. And so as an educator, when I'm using that reflective practice and that feedback that you mentioned, what I can determine is what's next in instruction. So do I need to provide additional instruction in another way? Is there a small group of students that need an intervention? Or is there a large group of students who need an enrichment? And so when we were really developing this philosophy, we came around the idea that this isn't just about the students because the person closest to the student that's making those decisions is the teacher. And so for it to be fluid, the teacher and the student have to have that feedback and that reflective practice. So that was why educators was included.
Okay. I'm not, I'm not sure I totally grasp it, but that's okay. I'll keep, but Dave wants to help explain it to me.
Mr. Rosenthal?
Let me see if this makes sense, okay? Because I saw that, and when I see the word reflective, it reminds me of something that we did last year in the joining district. And so I think the way this fits in, again, please tell me if I'm even close, but is we would look at, pick a particular teak and display it on a wall. And this is part of our PLC, okay? And we would put student work up there. And then we would come by with the principal and your partner, the teachers in the department, and we would analyze those to see, does this work reflect what the teak standard is saying? And it was called Reflective Practice Model. Your friend taught me that.
That's a very, that's a very good addition to explain this. The other thing I would say is that previously, our guide for educators has been a standard scope and sequence, which is important. But the audit showed us that educators were concerned about making the instructional decision to spend a little more time to support students in need. And so by placing educators in here, we're reinforcing that part of instructing is making that decision based on data. And so that's what we were trying to represent.
And one of the things that helped with was you would actually look at that teak and you would analyze word by word. And it might say, use the word model. And was that lesson actually modeling, you know, that teak? And if it wasn't, well, you had to think about that. It forced you to think about, you know, that lesson or that practice or that lab or whatever it was, to try to align yourself as the teacher with that teak. So that's where I think the word reflective comes from. That's what I think of. I assume that's kind of where you were hidden with that, so.
It's a very good description.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Mrs. James, do you have something else?
Well, I'm just, okay, so I understand that there's, I mean, I understand that there's a reflective part for everybody involved. I'm just trying to understand if our, if our assess, if our assessment is about students, we're, then, I mean, we want, I guess we want them to be reflective. I don't know, I just, I'm just, I'm not there, I guess. I just don't, I can't quite see how this emphasizes the student-centered piece of it because I think, I don't disagree that both pieces are important. And maybe what you're saying is that in order for, in order for, well, I don't know.
Ms. Helliger?
When I read it and I, and I hear you say it, I think of accountability. Just from a teacher's standpoint, kind of pigging back on what you were saying, that, hey, this is where we're supposed to be. And the kids are supposed to be learn, kids are supposed to be learning, asserting teak or whatnot. Where am I as a teacher? Where am I in making sure that they are meeting that performance? So I really appreciate the word for me that educator is part of this because it brings accountability back to those who are actually responsible for ensuring that they're meeting whatever level of performance they're supposed to be meeting. Now I know all those fancy teacher words, but I don't quote words, so there you go.
Thank you, Ms. Helliger.
And I agree with you. That's the way I look at it. It's, the term accountability, though, it's not like a, in this case, it's not like a gotcha thing. It's actually to help, oh, yeah, that's the verb in that teak. I didn't, I need to make sure that that's what I'm giving, you know, presenting, so.
Well, and I think the last part of the philosophy, it says, teaching and learning. That's our business. Teaching and learning. And so to me, the educators picks up on the teaching part. The accountability, too, I agree with that. But where are the educators in the teaching process? And where are the students in the learning process? And if the two things don't, if you don't have both, then you can't really have a full assessment. You can't just, you can't just look at where the student is. The teacher's got to assess where the teacher is in the teaching process and in the instruction. So, so I liked it there, too, because I think it, without that part of it, then we don't really have, we don't really have assessment. So that's, I kind of looked at it the same way. So my two questions are, when we talked about, you talked about, when we focus on, focus in on what a student needs by going through the, what are they called? Learning, what are we calling them now?
Learning intentions?
Learning assessments. Okay, so, so when we go through that process and the teacher identifies, you know, where students are, what does the classroom structure look like then in order to tailor the students are, what does the classroom structure look like then in order to tailor the teaching for the students, particularly our students who are in need? Because that's the point, right? Is we find out what a student needs and then we are going to tailor the teaching. So what does that look like in a classroom? And the reason I ask that is because I know we still have classrooms that aren't structured real well to take this group of kids who's struggling over here in this group that's not and make sure everybody's getting what they need.
So there are multiple models by which you could address a student need depending on the number of students that have that need. One is to utilize small group instruction where the teacher works with a small group of students while the other students proceed on an, on an assignment that could be done pretty much independently or with a little bit of guidance through like a scaffold front of the teacher. Another way would be to spiral that in. That works particularly well in mathematics, but maybe not so much in a science classroom. So it depends on the content area and also the teacher and their skill set with the management of the instruction.
So that leads to my next question is how are we ensuring that that's going to happen?
So we have a significant professional learning rollout this year. We are working specifically in elementary to establish teacher leadership cadres where we work on the instructional models related to guided math and balanced literacy. Both of those models have a small group instruction component. The other, with the secondary, we have team leader meetings. So the leaders of the core content areas come in a couple of times a year, and we'll be working with those team leaders to model instruction and they can go back on the campus. And then in all of our professional learning sessions, we try to use the different models of instruction so that teachers can see it from the learner perspective, but also from teaching.
And will we be able to provide support for teachers who maybe need extra help, extra, extra guidance, extra sort of on-the-job training? I mean, you know, they could get, I could envision a teacher getting to a particular unit or in a particular subject and seeing, okay, I got a, I got a big group of kids that are struggling here and, you know, maybe another big group of kids that aren't, and maybe I need some support in, you know, dividing up and making sure every student gets what they need. So how are we supporting them?
So one of the ways is through our instructional staffing model with instructional coaches, math specialist, and literacy intervention teachers. All of those teacher leader groups are skilled in that support. If a campus doesn't have one of those supports, then in the curriculum department, we have different venues for doing that. Some are like guided observation so they can go and watch a teacher doing it. Once you see someone else doing it, then it becomes a little bit easier for you to think about how that might work with your grade level or group of kids. And then the other is just direct support from our team.
Okay. That's good to hear.
Yeah. That was my question about support. Because I've been in the classroom in the past where the teacher was struggling to meet the needs of all the different kids and all the different things that were going on in the classroom. And that's where my concern is, making sure that they have the proper support to, to do this. And so, you know, maybe in a, an update, if you could provide like who, how many people do we have at these schools to, to support this? Because you said some, some schools may or may not have that. So in order for us to be successful, we have to write, have the right resources to support it. So we can't just have, you know, a philosophy and not have the framework to support it.
Thank you. So to wrap up, I want to say your, your findings, your priority findings on page five really excite me, not just as a board member, but as a parent. But I'll tell you, especially number one, because to me, the getting back, the quality tier-one learning, I mean, that's getting back to basics, and that's where, that's where our kids really need us to be. And so thank you guys for all your work. We really do appreciate it, and I'm excited to see how our, how it impacts kids and to hear the feedback from our teachers. So thank you all very much.
Certainly.
We will now convene in closed session under, under the Texas Open Meetings Act, Chapter 551, and the sections listed in the agenda and for the purpose of a private consultation with the board's attorney on any or all subjects or matters authorized by law. We are now convening in closed session.